From humble beginnings with a desire to serve the Dudley community, Bank of Dudley has grown to five locations, serving Lawrence, Twigs, and surrounding counties. Serving our community since 1905, the Bank of Dudley is looking forward to its second century of community banking. Drop in today to any of our five locations: Jeffersonville, Dudley, East Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, and downtown Dublin. Bank of Dudley, Member FDIC, and an equal housing lender.
Dr. Avery and Dr. Chuck Capella are glad to announce the opening of Central Georgia Primary Care, right next to Paul's Tire at 230 Industrial Boulevard. At Central Georgia Primary Care, we offer highly skilled physicians with compassionate, personalized care focused on each individual patient as our top priority every single day. Our physicians have devoted a lifetime of excellence in healthcare. It's Central Georgia Primary Care, bringing state-of-the-art healthcare right here at home.
We're going to start with item number one on the agenda, which is the approval of the February 3rd council meeting minutes. Council, let it... Council has had an opportunity to review the minutes. Mr. Brown has made a motion to approve. We have a second. We have a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Second item on the agenda is the approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
Council on the Council of Bills, bills, and all of the speakers of the city that are likely to make...
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion to pay the bills from Councilman Smith.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell.
We have a 2022 round 1500 quad cab pickup truck for the police department that will be used by the narcotics division. We got lucky this, this came from a bid that came, that we issued in 2020, and they are honoring the 2020 bid prices for a 2022 vehicle for us. Total amount is $20,277 from Beck Potter Sales Incorporated, and we ask the council to approve that purchase. In addition, the second purchase is crane services with Safeway train and rigging. If you've ever ridden across the River Ridge and looked to the north and seen the brick building that's just there, right before the curve starts on the river, that is the city's river pump station, and inside of that is, are a couple of what they call traveling screens that filter out leaves and other debris from the river water to keep it from getting into the pump that pumps it to the surface water plant. The city of Dublin has wells as well that provide water supply for the city. We operate at a 60/40 ratio, 60% of our water comes from surface water, and the remaining 40% comes from groundwater. This surface water, the river pump station, these screens have to be lifted by a crane in order to get them repaired. They ordinarily have a, as they say, they have a five to seven year lifespan. These were installed in 1970, so we've gotten quite a bit of use out of them. They've been repaired a couple of times, and the cost for this, this crane to lift them up for us is estimated to be $40,000, and we ask that council offer us to spend up that amount.
All right, and just for clarification, I understand that the police truck would be paid for out of SPOS funds, and that the crane services are actually already in the budget as part of budget amounts for that department. Is that correct?
We have them in the budget.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Jefferson, for providing the photos and the screen of the pump station screens. That's helpful to see what we're talking about there. Do we have any questions of staff from council members? All right, here none, we have a motion regarding the purchases over $15,000.
Make a motion to approve purchases over $15,000.
Just a second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara and a second from Councilman Colby.
For both of them, right?
That's for both purchases?
Yeah.
We don't have to do those separately, do we? This will be for both purchases. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we're moving on now to item number four of the agenda, which is discussion and action on a sales agreement between the city of Dublin and the Andaz Hotel. Mr. Powell.
Each year the city council, along with every other GMA member city, goes to Savannah for a summer conference, which takes place at the convention center there. City council traditionally stays at the Andaz Hotel, and you have that agreement for accommodations for this upcoming June 2022 conference, and staff has to approve the contract. We have rates per room listed in the agreement. The total estimated cost now is $12,961.
Do we have any questions from council members to staff regarding this issue? If not, does someone make a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown to approve the agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
The city of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today, so for your home, choose the most natural resource. Safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call 277-5048 today and let us help you start saving today.
It's nothing personal, it's just business.
Hello?
That's how some people do things.
Right away.
To us, everything we do is personal, because anyone can answer the call. It's who shows up that matters most. That's the quality of your independent agent and the company that stands behind them. Ask Currie Maffet Insurance in Dublin if auto owners make sense for you.
We're now moving to item number five of the agenda, discussion and action on an addendum to a contract with Thomas &amp; Hutton.
This is an agreement with Thomas &amp; Hutton for engineering services related to the TAP grant that we're receiving and will continue to receive, which is funded through the federal Department of Transportation. It's improving, the purpose of the grants to improve the gateway from East Dublin, from the bridge to the federal courthouse, and we did not know initially if we were going to get funding that would cover what this contract is about, but we've, since we originally got the grant, have learned that we will get funding for this. So, the grant can cover these costs in this agreement, but it's for the Phase II environmental study on the properties along Highway 8 there, as well as for lighting.
So, my understanding is that this, it provides an additional $120,000 from the TAP grant, is that correct?
That's correct. The total cost of the contract is $148,150. We have a 20% match at the city base.
So, the $30,000 would come from the city's, potentially the city's transportation discretionary fund, and by spending that $30,000, we qualify for another $120,000 in grants.
That's, that's correct.
Do we have any other questions for, of staff from council members? Here none, we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown. Any comments? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving to item six on the agenda, this is discussion and action on approval of an application and permit related to the Georgia Department of Transportation and the license plate readers.
The city council previously purchased, and on a number of occasions has purchased, these flock cameras that you see going up around town. They are vital to the police department and are going to prove to be very beneficial to them in locating wanted individuals, and so strategically, the police department desires to place the most recent purchase of cameras on some state routes, but before we can do that, we have to apply for a permit to do that, as well as enter into an indemnity agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation to place the camera within their roadway. Staff asks that you approve the application for permit, as well as the indemnity agreement.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff from council members?
Yeah. Mr. Brown, these for identification only, they're not ticketing, right?
No, these are not ticketing cameras. These, these cameras read the license plate, and Chief Moon is in the back there. If we have more questions, he can tell us. But, I tell you what, Chief, why don't you come tell us how these cameras actually work? And I think there may have been some coverage about this, but this, this is not on the agenda not to purchase the cameras. We've already done that, we've received them. This is an agreement with GDI to place them in the roadway.
Okay. All right. Chief Moon, can you give us some information about these flock cameras, please?
Yes, these cameras are not what we refer to as a live feed, they're static, and what happens several times a day, there's a data file that's dropped into a server, and so that server may have information on it, whether it's suspended registration, no insurance, wanted individuals, wanted vehicles, and as you are passing by these cameras, they basically take that tag number and run it against that database to see if there's any information in there for it. If not, it doesn't do anything. It does, it alerts us, and we have alerts in cars, phones, computers in our clerk's office, and it's been invaluable in investigations, as recently as two weeks ago, in catching a wanted individual. But it's not a live feed camera, it is just taking a picture of that, taking that image running against the database to see if there's any information about the tag number.
And my understanding is that you, that the department with council's approval has previously purchased these cameras, and now the placement of the cameras is what's the issue tonight, is that, is that your understanding?
Yes. We applied, we applied for this quite some time ago, and it was a lengthy process to make sure we were able to put these on state railways.
Okay. So, these cameras will be placed on state route, right ways, and that would be the purpose of tonight's agreement with the Department of Transportation?
That's correct.
So, you did clarify that that is not used for ticketing purposes, like for speeding or those kind of things, but it's for warranting and IDing vehicles?
It can be used to run against that, the database for suspended registration, no insurance and supply, it's not used for speeding, but we primarily use it for higher-tier investigations and that.
So, is it, if there's a crime in a particular area and you've got a flock camera that's there, are you able to go back and try to cross-match that to, to the cars that were in that area at the time of the crime?
Yes.
Is it used for those kind of purposes?
Yes. I went for 30 days, so after that, that information is wiped from the server.
How many do we have?
16 active right now, and then I think there's five or six on this contract, so...
Well, thank you for the information. Are there any other questions?
Chief, is there any way to back up that data, so it doesn't get wiped out for 30 days? Is there a way to build a server?
There is, we determine that, but we can set those limits ourselves, but with the company, but we found that 30 days usually accomplishes what we need to do, so...
Any other questions? Well, that was very helpful, thank you for coming in and speaking to us tonight. All right, so we're now ready for a motion. If a council member would like a motion to approve the application?
Send a motion for approval.
All right, well, we have a motion from Mr. Jones and a second from Mr. Griggs. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Whether you're a Braves fan or a Dogs fan, it feels good to be a winner. I'm Don Carswell, and you'll have fun with a winning deal from Dublin Chevy Nissan. Come and see our championship selection of new and pre-owned trucks here at Dublin Chevy Nissan. Titan or Frontier, it's your choice. Sierra or Silverado, you're the winner. For the W, all you have to do is call, click, or come in, and remember, Don sells cars well, only at Dublin Chevy Nissan.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dustin Gay. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon with Houston Clinic Orthopedics, and we'd really like to invite everybody to come out to our new office facility to take a look at it. It's a larger space with physical therapy, and we're just excited to have it, and we'd love for people to come out and visit us.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
Moving on to item seven, discussion and action on a resolution to approve a reimbursement agreement with Mr. Morris.
This is Resolution 2209, a resolution by the mayor and the council of the city of Dublin to accept and approve the terms of an agreement with Andrew Shane Morris for reimbursement of costs of training to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Just by way of explanation, when a law enforcement officer is, is trained against their first certification, state law requires that if another agency were to hire that officer away from the, from the agency that trained him, depending on the timing of when he's hired, if it's within two years, that hiring agency has to refund the cost, or some proportion of the cost, to the agency that trained him. Agency, law enforcement agencies, the city can also enter into other agreements with their employees whereby they set the terms of what their reimbursement would be. Andrew Morris is an officer with the city of Idalia Police Department, he's been trained by them, or they funded his training, and he's got an agreement that he would pay $10,000 to reimburse him the cost of his training if he were hired away by another agency. Generally speaking, our cost in getting an officer post-certified is just over $11,000, so he is actually from Dublin and wants to come back to work here, so we are asking the council to approve an agreement with him that he will refund us $10,000 in the benefit he's hired away from us within three years, just like he had with the city of Idalia.
Okay. Any questions of staff from council members regarding this agreement? I think that was a good explanation of it, appreciate that. Mr. Powell, do we have a motion?
Send a motion.
We have a motion from Councilman Guyford, do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agreement is approved. Moving on to the next item. Item number eight on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to rezoning .6 acres of land at 802 Brookhaven Drive. Mr. Powell.
This is an ordinance to amend zoning map, 2206, an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended, for the purpose of rezoning .6 acres, more or less, of property located at 802 Brookhaven Drive, Dublin, Georgia, from R1 Single Family Residential Zone to R2 Single Family Residential Zone, the proposed use is a home residence daycare. And that may sound confusing to the public, we've got two zones that are called Single Family Residential. The R1 Single Family Residential Zone allows for certain home occupations, as long as you're only using 25% of your floor space. In the city of Dublin, the R2 zone is the only zone that allows for a daycare to be operated in a single-family residential district, so that would be the, the change that is in this, to this particular parcel. So, this is just the first reading there.
All right, thank you. This is a first reading. Unless any council members desire to comment at this time, we will move on to the next item. I do want to note that the second reading of the ordinance will be at the next city council meeting, which will be on March the 3rd, and at that time, we can have citizens' comments on that ordinance. Tonight was just the first reading of the ordinance, it will appear again before council on March the 3rd. Now, moving to item nine on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone 3.61 acres of land at 102 Hillcrest Parkway. Mr. Powell.
This is an ordinance to amend the zoning map, it's an amendment, excuse me, number 2207, an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended, for the purpose of rezoning 3.61 acres, more or less, of property located at 102 Hillcrest Parkway, Dublin, Georgia, from B2, which is highway-oriented business zone, to M1, warehousing and light industrial use zone, the proposed use is an indoor climate control with many storage facility. And just to give further explanation, the property at 102 Hillcrest is what we are formerly known as Bogos, that's the building. The owner has subdivided out the parcel there and cut out most of the parking lot, so the area that will be rezoned is a small strip along the easternmost side of that parcel, and that connects down to the, to the building, and includes all the building in the, in the back portion of that lot, solid and red.
Okay. Thank you for that first reading. Do we have any council comments at this time regarding the first reading of this zoning proposal? All right, again, this is a first reading only, there will be a second reading and decision on the ordinance at the March 3rd city council meeting, and we're welcoming public comment at that time. The next item on the agenda is discussion and action on declaration of surplus, this is item number 10. Mr. Powell.
Ladies and gentlemen, get out of your checkbooks. We have quite a few items here, there are 14 particular items, and I can list them all, a 2001 Ford E350 van, a 1997 Ford E350 van, 2006 Ford F150 pickup truck, a 2009 Harley-Davidson motorcycle, a 2007 Road King Harley-Davidson motorcycle, a 2014 Magnum Meg 301 generator with AC, another one that's a Meg 302 generator with AC, a 2010 Ford Fusion, a 1992 Ford E350 ambulance, a 2007 Chevrolet C3500 ambulance, a 2011 Premier D 16 by 211 Boeing machine, and a 10-ton trailer, and then we also have another trailer that's mounted with a water and fuel tank that was in the police department, and various riot gears that I've been, I have other photos that you see on the screen.
All right, you have heard the listing of property that is proposed to be declared surplus. Do we have a motion for the declaration of surplus?
Move who?
We have a motion from Councilman Jones, do we have a second? Do we have a second from Councilman Griggs? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Jackson's Income Tax Service is ready to serve you. Jackson's Income Tax Service is open year-round, so don't delay. Come in today and get your taxes done and out of the way. Jackson's Income Tax Service has always stayed abreast of current and future tax laws. Email Jackson's Income Tax Service, call 272-8681, or visit us at 610 North Church Street in Dublin. Jackson's Income Tax Service is following CDC guidelines, practicing social distancing. You may drop off, email, or mail in your information for professional tax return services.
So, come to Jackson's Income Tax Service.
Where experience makes the difference.
My name is Phil Patel. I am one of the part owners here and the general manager here at the Hampton Inn and Suites. First time when I got introduced to Morris Bank, the people were so friendly and helpful. You feel like that you are appreciated there. At Morris Bank, everybody down at the bank is so friendly, and not just to myself, they're just friendly to everybody. They want us to succeed, because our success is their success at the same time. That makes a lot of difference, and they're always there for us.
That brings us to the end of our action agenda and to our favorite part of the meeting, which is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens who would like to make comments tonight?
Yes.
All right, we've got lots of folks, so we're going to start on this side, and we're going to move this way, and again, this is just by the, the rules the council passed where you get five minutes, and so we're, we're going to evenly apply that as we do at each meeting. Five minutes for citizens' comments. Ms. Holiday, you want to start with us, since you're in the car, right?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
What we got doing first? I want to say thank you for allowing me to come and speak, but I got, keep me informed that problem is...
Would you just like to name a place we can get in the middle?
Teresa Holliday. I just wanted to come up on behalf of the community here in the city of Dublin and Morris County, and as well as the O'Connell Trojans, which are, which is a travel team that has been operating within our community for the past couple of years, that I recently just got involved with over a year ago now. With this organization, there's my ecosystem, myself, and several others that are working from within the community, helping to coordinate, organize, combine, collaborate with others. Well, I basically wanted to come up and, I basically, myself and Mr. Tom wanted to just come and just to let the council know that we're reaching out, not only to you all, but the public as well, to know that we are that other resource that's out there to help with our kids. I know many of you are familiar that we have an issue here as sports games and things like that have gone on within the community, and we just want to be that entity to help. We, again, organized this organization back a year ago with our presence to reach out in the community, because we've got several other, other different organizations that are organizing here in the community. Just to name a few, we have our Business 525, which I co-chairman of, the SAC Club with Mr. Ricky Brown, the SASSI Revitalization Committee with Mr. Eugene Smith, the SASSI reunion that does a committee for there, Mr. DT, which is the Marius Thomas that has gone out and did so much for the kids in our community, as well as you all, and I, and I thank you, because as a community, we can't do it without each other. So, I just basically, me, myself, and Tom, wanted to come up and just inform you all of what we have to offer, and what we're trying to do within the community, as well as joining with these other organizations to try to help out. The kids started out, we ended up with over 200 children this summer that came out and were a part of this program, and mind you, it was not just boys, it was girls as well. Using football as an entity and the sports that we offer our kids, that tool to pull them in. Within that, we didn't just focus on the sports and the football, we also did mentor sessions, inviting pillars out of our community to come in and speak with the kids, to try and give them an insight that there is a second choice. You have a choice other than the wrong type of organization, and, and we, it's there, we have it here. So, we want to extend that choice, extend the resource, extend the community, and us as well, to let you all know that we're here. We're ready to work, we're ready to do our part, but we're ready to do it as a team with the city of Dublin, and not against it. Yes, the city of Dublin offers us some great programs, our county rec department offers some programs, our six schools, cities and city school systems, awesome programs, our Dublin Housing Authority offers programs, but there is something that we all know, if they still have time to do these other things and to get in this trouble, there's something we missing, we still have a breakdown, and we looking to be that vessel to try to help out, whatever we can do, we don't have all of the answers, I know you guys don't, but we just want you to know that we're here, you know, not only just for the travel team and the football team, but we're here as a community to help our kids and the kids of the city and the county to get on a better track, because this starts with our kids. If we want our city to build and grow, we've got to work on our people to help them understand the priority and the significance of this city being in the shape that it needs to be in. I won't use too much of your time, I promise you, but I definitely wanted just to extend that invite out to you all, and just keep us in line when you are thinking of these projects and things, and I love, want to extend, I love the idea about the cameras, oh, that made me feel so good, because there's the other eyes that are out there to see what our kids are going through and see what's going on in our community, but we as a people still need to be in the midst of it.
So, you said...
But again, I just wanted to say thank you, I wanted to just give you an insight on the team. These, these guys and girls have gone out, they've been a part of several games, not only in the community of Dublin, but outside in our surrounding, surrounding counties. Some of these kids have never been out of the county or the city, but they got to go to Tallahassee with you all's blessings, they got to go to Orlando, and we're a part of a national football group that speaks volumes, and it not only speaks volumes to the kids, it speaks volumes on us as a city, because we all pulled together and sent them kids up there. So, again, thank you.
Well, thank you for all that you're doing. Does council have any questions for? Go ahead, Mr. Mascara.
I have a suggestion. I think we all know you very well, but you're on Facebook, and people are seeing this live, and I think to talk the truth about what you're doing, I think you should talk about yourselves a little bit, and your, your professional experience in doing what you're doing, where you worked Theresa and Tom in your past, and how youth has been a big part of what you do, because I think a lot of organizations that are headed by people that know what they're doing can take gravity, and I think the more people know that it's, that it's led by people of your character, I think that it could help you out, so I think you should talk a little bit about yourselves.
Okay. Oh, well, first off, I... Well, first off, I started off with doing a lot of things in the community like years, 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 years ago. And I started out as far as working with the girls. I was a single mother at the time with my two girls, and there was a lot going on at that time within the same communities that are challenging for us. So I wanted to bring something back to the community and started out with a program for them there. I did that a couple of years, which I thought was great because I guess because I love it, I love working with people. I went out from there, working with our Sasa Revivalation Committee. At that time, Mr. Payne was involved, so you know, it's a long time. And then I went up from there. And I started doing different other little community outreach programs with them. I worked for our Morris County Community Health, which I love, I over-love it. It's working with people as well. I'm also co-chairing to the 525 Vision. I also co-chair with, I also co-chair with our O'Conne Trojans organization. I also am on the Democratic Party. I also, I just, I wear a lot of hats. But I tell you, with wearing those hats, I love, love what I do. And I love it because of the love that I receive from the people and the kids that are in our community. You know, we can do, we can all day do jobs for checks, but I do jobs for the love. And I know that, you know, within the things that I do, these kids feel it. And that's all that matters to me. So I can stand up here all day and go over the things that I do, but the main thing that I do is I, like I said, I work for a community service board in Middle Georgia. I'm a program manager there. I run the Spirit Program, which is Support Peers in Recovery Initiative Task Force. And it's a wonderful group of people. You all need to meet them. Their intellectual disabilities is what's challenging for them. So we started up a program because of the pandemic and to give them another resource to reach out to, again, even with the city. You know, not just the community, they are a part of our community. So even with that program, we need to reach out and give that sense of...
Ms. Holiday, I was really honored that you invited me to meet with the group that you work with in the Spirit Program. And, you know, they may be intellectually challenged, but they have a beautiful spirit, beautiful heart. And that was a really high moment for me to be able to meet with them and talk with them and appreciate all that you do, not just through your work with the community service board, but all your volunteer activities in the community as well. Now, I know Mr. Walker doesn't say much.
He did, yeah.
I'm basically, I started working over at Johnson Street School with learning disbehavior kids with Al Manning for about... I worked there about 11 years, and I worked the community mental health board with the same perspective of things, working with kids, grownups with learning disbehavior problems, all kinds of different drug adolescents with Judge Tribble here. I think he's still in town with him. With Gwen Coenett, so I worked with her, worked with kids that was on drugs. At the time, we had a catch program. The kids would come over and basically I was like one of the people that worked with them, tested them and make sure that they have drugs in the system when they go home and come back. So like she was saying, we've been involved, I've done this over 30 years. So working with mentally challenged kids and just regular kids, training them in football, me and Benny, we coached kids back in 2000. We worked the kids, you know, pretty much all our lives, you know, just basically, we want to have another pillar, like she said, for things that we can do with the kids to kind of help that.
Well, y'all are an inspiration, and we know how much our community has benefited from the work that you do. And I hope that other people will see what you're doing and be inspired to do the same things. It is making a difference. Does anybody else in the council have any questions? Thank you for coming and presenting tonight.
Thank you.
The diesel and automotive technology programs at O'Conne Fall Line Technical College are hands-on and can be completed in a year and a half or less. Students gain valuable experience working on state-of-the-art equipment and training aids, and even maintain the college's diesel truck and vehicle fleet, which allows them to see the real-world issues they'll encounter on the job before they graduate. During labs, students are exposed to every part of the automobile or diesel truck and are required to put the theories they've learned in the classroom and during lectures into action. OFTC's diesel program is certified through Daimler Trucks of North America's Get Ahead Program, which allows students to add certifications to their resume before entering the workforce. Automotive technology students can also earn entry-level certifications through automotive service excellence. Adding these certifications to their resume before entering the workforce sets OFTC graduates apart when applying for jobs. These programs are flexible, and instructors work with students to accomplish their individual goals. Day and some evening class options are available, and the majority of a student's classwork is done online, so time on campus is spent applying knowledge and practicing skills through lab assignments. Careers in the diesel and automotive technician industry are in demand, and the more a technician learns, the more valuable they become to their employer. Opportunities in these fields are endless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Henry Whitfield, and I am the community director and the president for Middle Georgia State University. I am also a neighbor of Dublin, grew up here. And you mentioned Johnson Street School, that's where I attended school, the grammar school, and been actively involved in a number of activities in Dublin over the years. My purpose of being here tonight is to give you an update on Middle Georgia State University, where we are now, what our plans are, and what we have directly planned for our campus here in Dublin. First, let me say that in addition to our Dublin campus, which is now our healthcare degree program hub, we have five other campuses which are located in Macon, Cochrane, Eastman, One Robbins, and now online, what we call NJ Direct. Share some information with it, give you some information about our campus. We have a campus map, and you also have some other documents to tell a little bit more about our school, our university, and where we're located. Also talks about some of our academic programs. Our record enrollment for the university was for fall semester of 2019 with over 8,400 students. Unfortunately, since that time, our enrollment has declined. Much of that was due to the downturn with COVID. We have a plan in place to anticipate not only reaching, but exceeding our overall student enrollment goal of 8,405 students. Earlier this year, on the 26th of January, Dr. Christopher Blake, our president for Middle Georgia State University, shared his State of the Union address, which also can be found on YouTube and our website, middlegeorgiestateuniversity.edu. And that's also available on YouTube, as I mentioned. And among the advocacy addresses were, first of all, COVID, and our plan for COVID and the leadership for COVID over the past two years, and our plans for moving forward. Our Peyton Anderson Foundation Enrollment Center, which is on our Macon campus, is now open, and we serve students on all five of our campuses, as well as our online campus. Our Macon campus has certainly changed over the years, most recently this past year, with land being cleared, a new entrance around about, and a new building, which is the Peyton Anderson Foundation. We have recently celebrated the success of our historic fundraising campaign, which is building a legacy of greatness. With a goal of $11 million, we actually raised $11.6 million for the benefit of our students. Among other items, the fundraise helped purchase new aircraft and helped promote scholarships for our students. We also received millions of dollars in public funding to allow us to transform our Dublin Center into a healthcare hub and also renovate our Roberts Library and Durt Hall on our Cochrane campus and purchase aircraft and equipment for our Eastman campus. In December this past year, our commencement exercises, we had a record level of graduates with over 800 graduates, 550 with bachelor's degrees, and 110 with master's degrees. At our One Robbins campus, we have information technology dual enrollment students taking classes, building their career at Project Synergy in partnership with Robbins Air Force Base and the 400 Second Software Engineering Group in partnership with Hustin County Schools. We are pleased that we are now designated as a Level 5 institution, which means that we can offer doctoral level degrees. We went from a Level 3, which offers master's degrees, directly to a Level 5. And we're doing that through our online courses and our IT programs. We also continue to be an education on financial value for our students and parents with our basic in-state undergraduate tuition and mandatory fees being only $4,742 a year, the best value in the state. We don't say the cheapest, we say we are the best value. And the university system at which it averages is $6,895 per year. So it's a value to stay home, go to school here in Dublin. Now, specifically by our Dublin campus, I hope you had an opportunity to see our campus. And so many of you have been there for our announcement, we made that on November 30th. But Governor Kemp has also recently announced $900,000 in new funding to our school to help assist in expansion for our Dublin campus. This project has been in process since late 2020, but even we have received $408 million in state bond funding to expand our space, equipment, and the faculty here. Now underway, our project includes two large nursing lecture classrooms, a 20-bed hospital laboratory, a three-bed nursing simulation lab, and technologically advanced observation room that connects to the simulation lab, and two additional nursing faculty members dedicated to our Dublin campus. With this new funding, our university can complete the original plan more exponentially than expected and increase virtual learning labs, virtual experiential learning labs. In addition, the expedited completion of a chemistry lab as part of the project means we can move faster to introduce the respiratory therapy program for our Dublin campus when approved by the Commission on Accreditation for Respiratory Care. We have offered an associate's degree program in nursing on our Dublin campus. For many years, we have typically admitted 60 students per year, but our expansion will allow us to admit 100 students each academic year and expand that program to a four-year degree versus our associate's degree, which we had previously had. The benefit is that our students, our nursing students, may remain at home in Dublin versus traveling to other campuses for our four-year degree. Our non-nursing students can still take courses here at our Dublin campus, can take their core courses here. The current status of construction is that demolition is underway as we speak. Framing is continuing on walls as of this week's construction. I'm saying that with weather permitting and other factors, but we are a couple of weeks ahead of schedule. And our faculty and IT have recently had their walkthrough. And pending that unforeseen circumstances, we plan to offer our nursing program classes when classes begin this fall. And I hope each of you have had an opportunity to see our Dublin campus and experience, not just see what we have to offer. I offer you the opportunity to tour our campus. Please sit me afterwards if you'd like to tour the campus. And I thank you, each one of you, council members and Mr. Mayor, for your continued support of our school, Middle Georgia State University. Our students, our staff, and our faculty, we thank you. We are proud of our university, and we're proud to represent the city of Dublin. And I appreciate your time here this evening. Any questions, I'll be glad to address.
Do we have any questions? I know that we're all very excited about the addition of the four-year degree and the expansion to 100 students. You know, developing a skilled workforce is the key to economic growth and quality growth, and you are a huge vital partner in that. So we certainly appreciate all that you've done and that Middle Georgia State University is doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, everyone. Hey, boy, how I was here on November 4th to talk to you about our subdivision intersection out there at Livo and Woodland Trails. And I do want to thank you all for doing the study. I realize that there is processes you have to go through. I did get a call from Matt. Matt talked to me about the decision. It appears that, yeah, I was told it was unwarranted after I came in and showed speed limits in excess of 70 miles an hour through the intersection. It's recommended at no more than 45. And after talking with more than 20 of the people out there that either came by or called me or contacted me, we did consult with an attorney, and he suggested that first thing is maybe get you to review the decision because I don't feel like the human element was there. Sure, numbers might point to something you might not think is warranted, but if I look at the Weather Channel and it says it's sunny outside, go outside and it's raining. So my request tonight is that you review this decision because, like I say, the majority of the people, and just because I'm the only one here that don't think I have a lot of support, over 20 people, I don't know how many, in the last two weeks. And they're wanting to file a petition. And I said, well, let's do this, let's give them a chance to look at it one more time. Just give it another look. Because what's happening is, we're in the city at one time, Herman Town, which made this road, a state road, after doing some research on it. Okay, it was rescinded back to the city, it's a city street. And I know if someone ran 74 mile an hour down the Beatty Avenue, they wouldn't go very far. And I know on Brookwood, we have four-way stop. All we want is a four-way stop. There was a bad wreck Monday. I don't know how many were involved. I saw the car come by, I was in the yard. I believe it was either a Maxima or an Altima, I'm not sure. But it came by and I heard a crash. I got in my truck and immediately I heard ambulances and fire trucks. If there had been a four-way there, that person would have had to stop and then go on down to the bypass. They're allowed to run roughshod all the way from Dublin, all the way out Brookwood, top that Brookwood hill, where you're trying to get out of that gas station, and they run all the way to the bypass unchecked. Okay, it wouldn't hurt to have the four-way there. So what we would like to do is ask you guys if you would please look at this decision. Because I know when I originally came on November 4th, I had three or four council members, I think, and then I also talked to Lance Jones, that told me, hey, I know what you're talking about, but I've been out there, go out there. I know exactly what you're talking about. So we don't understand, because it's a really inconvenience for us to sit there five to six minutes in the morning in May morning, you couldn't get out for the cars coming to and from the bypass. Sometimes you go out there, there's not a car inside, and then sometimes it's Grand Central Station. So if you guys would consider looking at that, I'm just going to ask you if you can do that before we go through with anything else. We would love to just keep it on that note and see if y'all might look at it again. Like I say, sometimes the numbers are great, that's what I studied when I went to Middle Georgia. Math and science was my stuff. And numbers are great, but sometimes you got to get that common sense element in.
Thank you for your comments. I know that since November 4th, there's a lot of new faces up here, and we're learning, you know, some of the things that maybe have been in process before we got here. And I'm certain that we'll speak with staff and at least follow up with them. And I always appreciate citizens coming forward with their concerns and bringing them to your elected officials. Do you have any further comments?
Anybody have any question you'd like to ask me and the new folks?
Any questions?
Well, what we are, we pay the city taxes, but we're the ones that are really doing it. It's very bad, and I'll bet that a lot of these folks are county people, and that's fine to be a county person, because I was at one time, we were annexed. But anyway, what I'm saying is that, you know, Monday morning, I had to sit there five minutes or more to get out, couldn't get out. And then I had to risk my life to get out. So I would appreciate y'all taking a look at it and advising me of what you find. And I'll talk very much.
Thank you very much for your...
Thank you, and I appreciate each of you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
At Lake's Alignment, we would like to take this time to thank our community for your support over the last 66 years, and especially these last few months with the opening of our brand-new Truck Center. When you drive into Lake's Alignment, you get master-trained technicians like Anthony Penny. Everybody calls him Bug. But it means so much to us. And on behalf of Neil Harden, Lisa, our staff, and the entire Lake family, we thank you for supporting us since 1954. Come see us today. We open every morning at 8:00. And now our Truck Center is open on Saturday to serve your big trucks and equipment from 8 until 12. At Lake's Alignment, we thank you and this entire community, and we'll continue to serve you with the best-trained staff and friendly, courteous service. Lake's Alignment, hometown people serving hometown people. Come see us today, 104 Johnson Street, East Dublin.
All right, we have additional citizens' comments. Please go forward.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing? My name is Jeffrey Washington, the reason I'm here, I'm asking for a small favor. I'm from Dublin, I graduated from Dublin. I run several successful businesses out of Dublin. Currently in the midst of investing in a community that I grew up in, or just catch the bus stop in, it's forming the north side of Dublin, which is known as Scottsville. It's a patch of water that sits between Mary Street and Decatur, especially when it rains. You know, it sits there for several days. You know, it's sit there for several days, I've spoken with the engineer, taken pictures. I've emailed them, and the reason I'm coming forth with this today is because I'm willing to invest in my community, my plans is to open a community store, wherever's my spot to go. I've already started working over there. I have a twenty-two-hundred square feet shop that's already just sitting, you know, on the back of the property. I pulled up the pavement, which is, you know, concrete. And now, you know, when it rained, and I'm expecting, we're supposed to have some rain tonight. So, you know, if you have time, you know, you can drive by and see what I'm talking about. And the water is basically, you know, pushing up against my property. All I need is a drain. Spoke with the engineer, took pictures, we had to show them dirt and put a dam up. And basically, the drain is in the wrong area, you know, so the water's running down East Mary Street and it's seared, he in his hole. And, you know, summer months, it's not a problem. When it's raining, it's a big issue. And I'm willing to go the extra mile to invest in my, you know, a community store for this side of town, you know, I'm pretty active in my community. You know, Penny know me, Bill know me, Chrissy even know me. I'm just asking, you know, that I just get a drain so I can, you know, go forth. I'm planning on, you know, having a, you know, a only for kids to catch the bus stop, you know. So, again, my name is Jeffrey Washington, you know, I just ask that you guys look at that for me.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Do we have any questions from council for Mr. Washington?
Can you give the address of the property that you're...
It's 414 East Mary Street. Any other questions? And just to let you know, Mr. Washington, we always take notes of citizens' comments, and even though we don't address them directly at the meeting, we follow up with staff and try to get some background information. And depending on staff's response, hopefully someone will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Likewise.
Do we have anyone else that would like to make comments tonight, citizens' comments? All right.
Thanks, Billy. I'd be very glad to let me speak tonight. I'm like him, we need some drains, Eleanor Drive, I think they just forgot us.
Before you get going, can you give us your name, please?
My name is Lucille Vaughn.
Thank you.
I used to work for the Lawrence County Ambulance Service. I'm paramedic, so I did a lot of work in this area. I worked at the Lawrence County Jail in the medical department, so I've been around. So, I'm telling you, when I go out my door, I have to step in water. And I have never seen rain just come down and then go down on my, you know, where my car parked at, and then it comes right across the front of my house. Okay, well, I have puddles of water there, and I, you know, I usually could jump over them. I'm water now. I'm seventy-three years old and I can't jump across that water now. You go out the back door, you got the same thing. And I looked up and some of these places they got, you know, the little, see that curving and all like that, they come right up to our door because they came up to Flannery Street putting them in, the other streets around there. But then just forget Eleanor Drive. And I don't think we causing a problem or anything, but we don't want to be forgotten. We want some of that water, you know, where we could go. Either tell us what we need to do to get something done. I mean, usually I don't come to the meeting, but sometime I'll call, sit home. They'll say they're gonna call me back, they never call me back. And then when I do call them back, they say, well, we went out there, we can't, there's nothing we can do. I don't know, go with it, or something that we can do. There's something that we can do. If you will, tell me what you want me to do, and I'll try and do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Ms. Vaughn, what's your actual address?
Three zero five Eleanor Drive.
Three zero five.
Phone number two.
I'll get that from you after too.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
My name is Jeremy Blackstock, I'm the head of school at Trinity Christian. We would invite you to come to our campus so we can show you around and discuss ways that we can partner with your family in Christian education. Our goal here is to teach the truth and to have students leave here prepared to serve others and serve God in their communities.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've gone to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future, that's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter, Member FDIC.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Green. We're located inside of the Dublin Mall at Tofara. We offer lash services, eyebrow waxing, and full-body waxing, colonic therapy, and also Yoni steams. Call us for more details at four seven eight two seven four nine four nine zero. Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens' comments?
Get up, boy. I'm Barbara James. I too have done a lot around Dublin and Lawrence County. I retired from Lawrence County Board of Ed as school bus driver, worked with the Dublin City School Bus as the sub for special ed students. Those are my heart, special ed.
Babysitted me.
Yeah, I did. But anyway, I have a request, and I have not been here to bring it before the council, but I have spoken to some council members in the past. We have some houses on Eleanor Drive that really, really need some desperate attention. We have one on the corner of Eleanor and Academy. It's grown up so much around it, you can hardly see the house. We, as being a member of the O'Conne Alumni, we do the city beautiful thing every year. There's no way we can win because we'll be before we ever get started. These people does not clean up, and in this house that I'm speaking of right now, nobody lives there, but you can't see the house because all of the trees, the plum bushes, and the scrubberies and all that stuff has grown up around it. If there's a yard there, I've never seen it, and I've been over there twelve years. I've never seen it, if there's a yard. We have a house further back up that somebody has to live it in, but it's indecent. It's no water, no lights, much junk out in the yard. You know, like I said, we got another house over there that people live in the house, but I don't think the people have water, whatever it takes to get garbage cans, because they have the garbage and they put it out. The city never picks it up, and it just get blowed all over the community. Our community needs some help, and I'm in the community with Ms. Vaughn. We need some help, some desperate help, because the people are not concerned, obviously. You know, and we really need some help. I live at three fifteen Eleanor Drive, I'm in the curb behind the fence. So, and I'd like, Ms. Vaughn, if you need my phone number, please call me. I do whatever I need to do to help get it cleaned up, keep it cleaned up. But we gotta have some help from the council to get started. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. James. Any other citizens' comments?
I'm Richard Moore. I just recently relocated back to my hometown of Dublin from living in New York City. I came to take care of my mom who's aging. My mother has been working for the past five years to work with the USDA revitalization program on getting a home built. We acquired the land next to my home at 102 Forest Avenue. There's a huge barn, it's been there as far back as I can remember as a child, and just has aged and become an eyesore for our community. My mother has acquired this property, or is in the process of acquiring the property from Mr. Curry. Now, for many years, this barn has stood there, dilapidated, bringing down, and just being an eyesore to our street. There's a curb that you have to go around, the view is obstructed. And my purpose of coming before everybody today is just to ask, because there is a revitalization program available, but it ends at Jefferson, and I'm on the opposite side of that and can't take advantage of that for my mom. So I'm just asking if you would kind of take into consideration, I'm right there at the block for that program, but can't get any of the benefits from that program. We're gonna acquire the property, we just need dumping is expensive out here. But I'm even offering some of the wood to be reclaimed by local artisans to give it a historical reference in case it had any. I haven't found any historical features about the location, but I'm looking to take it down and kind of open up that curb there. My mom is building a house which will raise the value of properties in our area. She's gonna build her dream home, finally, you know. This is the street where I came home to, although I grew up abroad. I'm bringing back some of those taste indulgences to bring a little more class, if you will, to our area. South Side, as I've overheard everybody say, is in need of a revitalization. So we're needing some attention paid to our area. I agree with the residents of Eleanor, my street forest, we don't have proper curbs. There's water that runs all down into the yards of everyone. We just kind of feel left out in the consideration of having an appropriate-looking neighborhood that you could be proud of. And as my mom is aging, she's having memory issues. I'd like to get this barn taken down and removed, not only to improve our own property, but to improve the area. Plus, it'll make it safer for drivers. Just as something could be done, I would very much appreciate it. I'd like to thank you for taking the time today and considering our request.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Moore?
No, but I do want to let you know that I spoke with one of the code enforcers just this week, and that barn is being taken down.
It is being taken down? Well, that would be...
That backs up behind the Mary's house?
Yes, ma'am. My mother just, we haven't closed on it yet, but we're acquiring that property and basically had no idea that they were taking it down. I've been trying to speak with, you know, local artisans, as I said, because I feel like the wood could be used for something to improve the area.
Right.
But we want to get that barn out of there, it's just such an eyesore.
It's coming down.
I appreciated that.
Well, thank you again for your comments. And I'll just say for the public's benefit that we're gonna be at a goal planning session as a city council this weekend. And one of the items on our first day is neighborhood improvements. And personally, this is one of my main concerns as to what we do as a city, is improving the experience of living in town, improving the experience of being part of the community and being in a neighborhood. And that means a lot of different things, like controlling litter, controlling stray animals, tearing down dilapidated homes, putting in sidewalks, curbing drudges, addressing flooding problems, putting in streetlights, planting trees, and slowing down traffic. Those are the basic functions of our government, and that's what improves the experience of living in town. And sometimes it's easy to get excited about big projects and the multimillion-dollar investments that we make getting big buildings, but we've got to pay attention to the small things in the neighborhoods. So I really appreciate all of you coming forward tonight and letting us know how that impacts your life and your experience of living in Dublin. And hopefully, we'll be addressing all of this soon.
I just have a quick question. Do you have a demo date already scheduled?
Oh, I don't, I don't.
If you have any questions about that, we can talk with Mr. Powell after the meeting.
We spoke on the phone.
Yes, we did. You did as much as you could do for me, you spoke, but I'm just outside of that area.
Yeah, and as you were speaking, I didn't, it was a fact that I didn't realize when we were talking, so I'll study after the meeting and I'll speak to you at Dublin.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your time.
Do we have any other citizens' comments tonight?
Hello, my name is Steve Harden, and I'm the lead pastor of the Dublin Church of God. I want to give you a special invitation to come and visit us here in house. On Sundays, it's at eleven AM and six PM, and Wednesday nights, it's at seven PM. Our church is located in 1059 Claxton Dairy Road in Dublin, Georgia. We are a church that ministers to the whole family, to give them hope, to counsel, to love, and a place to grow. We invite you to join us on our spiritual journey. We're looking for that blessed hope and the glorious appearance of our great God and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Conservative treatment options are typically where we start with both knee and hip arthritis. So if you come in to see us and your hip is beginning to be arthritic or your knee's beginning to be arthritic, there's sort of a stepwise approach that we take. Anti-inflammatories, which are medicines like Motrin, Advil, Leve, are usually sort of first line. We have prescription forms of those medications that we can use. In our elderly population, that becomes a little more difficult because they have comorbidities, things like diabetes or stomach ulcers or disease, that they can't take those medications, even hypertension. So we'll try to treat them with medications if it's appropriate. When it's not, then we go on to things like injections. So cortisone injections, or there's these things called visco-injections or visco-supplements, which are lubricating-type injections that we can use to treat knee arthritis as well as hip arthritis to try to control people's pain. And a lot of times, we do that for years for people before they get to the point where those are no longer working and we're ready to talk about knee or hip replacement.
All right, well, let's move on to staff comments. Mr. Bradshaw? Mr. Wright? Mr. Daines?
No comments.
Madam Clerk?
No comment, thank you.
All right, we'll go to the council members. This time, we'll start over here. Mr. Brown, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for being here. We always appreciate citizens sharing their issues. As has already been said, we'll certainly take those under advisement and in some, we'll try to touch with regarding this. Thank y'all for coming.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo everyone, thank you everyone for coming out. Citizens, voicing your opinions, voicing your concerns, that's our job to listen to our constituents and act on that, so thank you for that. I'm very glad you did. I also would like to put out an announcement that next Saturday, on the twenty-sixth of February, at nine o'clock, our team court will start training. So if you know a young person in middle school, sixth grade to twelfth, that wants to be part of team court, they come out next Monday, next Saturday morning at nine for training. The following Saturday, Saturday the March the fifth, will actually be, we actually start back up team court right here at City Hall. So they come and be part of that, and it's a great program, one of our new programs to be part of. And also, you can start looking out for our new council applications at schools, and all the schools be looking out for that. So that will be coming out soon also. So the way to get our young folks involved, as I always say, always looking to get our young people involved and get their mind off of what's going on. This way, they can learn government, learn about the court system, participate, so they get involved. So please, I'm knowing a young person between sixth grade to twelfth grade, they can get involved in team court. And a young person in the tenth grade, twelfth grade, they can get upcoming sophomore to upcoming senior, get involved with your council. Two great programs that we have for the City of Dublin. And once again, thank you citizens for coming out. I did, I got my associate's degree from Middle Georgia, way back in the days, so.
Thank you for those comments, and Councilman Cottrell?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you all for coming out. It feels good when we have citizens actually show up and actually speak to us about their concerns. So thank you all for that. I just want to say, I pray everybody have a safe trip to Savannah tomorrow. Be careful on the road and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cottrell? Councilman Paul?
Again, just excited to hear engagement from our community. Neighborhoods are so important, as what, where we live, and where we come home to, and it's so important that we're making a wise investment in our neighborhoods, so thank you all for coming out and commenting about that. I also am very excited to hear from Mr. Whitfield, because I have two of my four children who are currently attending MGA, so we're so excited about the educational opportunities that that brings to our community. I've visited three of your six campuses, and I'm very impressed, so thank you for the work that you're bringing to bring education, not only affordability, but also the location right here in Dublin, Georgia, to our community and our students, so thank you for that.
Thank you for those comments. Councilman Mascara?
I just want to say thanks to Teresa and Tom for what y'all do for the community. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it's important that people understand that we know what you're doing when it comes to youth, and supporting you is a good thing. Middle Georgia, thank you for coming. Mr. Whitfield, I appreciate what you guys do. I did not attend Middle Georgia, you wouldn't have me. And it's good to see people returning to our community with other takes on things. I remember coming back to Dublin eleven years ago, twelve years ago now, and pitching some ideas, and people saying I was crazy. Crazy work sometimes if you have a good business plan and you want to see some change where you live, you know? I always tell people, and everything that they do in their communities about improving your fighting position, making your community better, and it's just, it's good to be up here and listening to the folks that are taking initiative and ownership in their community, and putting themselves out there to make some changes. So we appreciate you all more than you could ever imagine.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Smith?
I'm not gonna echo what everyone said, but I really do thank everyone for coming out tonight. Ms. Lucille, Ms. Barbara, Richard, I appreciate y'all, because y'all are my work, and I continue to encourage y'all to come down to the council chamber to discuss your problems, your neighborhood and commission in front of all of us, because I'm just one voice, and my fellow council leaders as well. Mr. Washington, I so appreciate you for coming, and trying to invest back into your community. I have invested in my community, so I really appreciate that, that goes a long way, and we're grateful for that. And just, everyone continue to be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Griggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to thank everybody for coming and expressing opinions tonight. It's nice to hear these kind of things, so we'll have some direction to hand in, and everybody have a good weekend and stay safe.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Just like to thank you all for coming, and remind everybody to get your grooming out of your closet, we're about to enter our correct time of year in Dublin. And if you don't have a brochure of the list of events, I think we have some out front at City Hall, but looking forward to our correct St. Patrick's season. Thank you for those that came and spoke. We will address those concerns that you raised, and we'll get back with you soon.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, and I also want to encourage everyone to come out to Dublin High School on this weekend, we have the recent tournament going on, we're playing for the recent championship come Saturday, hopefully, so they should come out to the games.
Thank you for that.
One more thing, Mayor. I forgot to mention it, because he said, he said, St. Patrick's Committee, March fifth, they're still looking for vendors for...
Muddies?
Muddies. And the application, I think, is online, and if you need one and can't find it online, you can reach out to Kathy Jones, or Jeff Cannon, to get one of the applications, show them on the St. Patrick's Committee.
Okay, great, thank you for that information. Anybody else have any additional information or announcements? All right, thank all of you for being here, this meeting is adjourned.